Now 7:00 PM, so I would like to go ahead and call together this regular city council meeting for Monday, August 28th. We can all say pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Holly, will you call our roll, please? Lanyon?
President.
Pratt?
Here.
Jenkins?
Here.
Van Ooster?
Here.
Reins?
Here.
Gilroy?
Here.
Hanson?
Here.
All right, now I'm looking for approval of the agenda as submitted unless we have changes that need to be made. Thank you so much. Do I have support?
Sure.
Thank you both. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And now we have an opportunity for audience participation with a maximum of five minutes per presentation. If there's anybody that would like to come forward, I'd like you to state your name and your address.
Question?
Yes.
Do I want to talk about the road diet? Do I wait the discussion later?
That would be the discussion later. Thank you so much. All right, moving along, we have our council meeting minutes of August 14th, 2023. I'm looking for approval unless there were changes that were noted.
Move to approve.
All right, thank you so much. Do I have support?
Second.
Thank you so much. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries as well. Now we have an opportunity for accounts payable. Brandon, you had an opportunity to review.
I did. Everything was in the ordinary. We didn't have any crazy expenses, a lot of maintenance for our town and our public works, along with obviously the payments for taxes we do to the different organizations like the schools and the town students, et cetera. So with that, I would make a motion to approve checks 76498 through 76964, ACH 504 through 517, for a total of $283,733,039.
Great, thank you so much. Did anyone have any questions regarding our accounts payable for this evening? Yes, Terry?
Senator, you think that's an annual?
Yes.
Okay. It's part of our budget?
Mm-hmm. All right. I'm looking for support for Brandon's motion.
Support.
Thank you so much. Holly, will you call the roll for accounts payable, please? Van Ooster?
Yes.
Reins?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lanyon?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Van Ooster?
Yes.
All right, thank you so much for that. Moving right along into our action items, we only have two items this evening. The first is going to be up to set our joint work session with Planning Commission for the master plan update, and I'm going to turn this over to our city manager, John Hanifin. We do have a memo in our packet.
Thank you, Mayor Gilroy.
Good evening, everyone. So we've talked about starting this process way back in our visiting session in March as part of the new fiscal year, the need, and we're a little bit past due for updating the master plan in the preseason zoning ordinance. So this is really the first step. It's getting together a planning commission to workshop format. Will be a public meeting. Public certainly invited to attend that. Wanted to start meeting sooner rather than later. I don't anticipate meeting a joint session more than once, but we can certainly always come back and do that as we sort of wrap the planning process up. So recommending that we meet on either Wednesday, the 27th of September, or Wednesday, October 4th at 6:00 PM. Initially, we're going to try and get the needs to training room. We may end up going somewhere else just because of the format. We really do have more of a roundtable thing, and that's a great training room, but it's not exactly the best for that. But yes, if any, have to answer any questions you may have, but we're looking at either the 27th of September or the 4th of October.
Okay. And I'm not sure whether council has the ability to check calendars while you're here. I mean, most of us do have cell phones. I know personally I'm available either of those dates. So, yes.
Available either?
Either?
Either, yeah. At 6:00? Good idea.
Yes.
I like that.
Yes, absolutely. Any opposition from the rest of council as to what date we pick? They're Wednesdays, sporting activities?
Sooner probably better, don't you think?
Well, they're a week apart.
We'll make them.
Yeah, all right. What would be your preference? Do you have a jerk? All right. All right, then I'm looking for that recommended motion.
I would move that we set a joint council work session with the planning commission for Wednesday, September the 27th at 6:00 PM.
Thank you so much. Do I have support?
Second.
Thank you both. Holly, will you follow the roll for that, please? Reins?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lanyon?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Van Ooster?
Yes.
All right. Next on our list, our action items is the McCormick Park Pavilion replacement contract. And this is something that we've had in several budget cycles, but I know we've been -- we had COVID happen, we had a couple other things happen, so we do have a memo in here from Scott. So I'll turn it over to Scott, and then I'm sure John will be able to answer some questions as well.
All right. As mentioned, there's a memo in the council packet that kind of explains the bidding process that we went through and a little bit about the pavilion. There are two pavilions in McCormick Park. One of them is -- we don't have exact dates, but it's pre-1970s, we think significantly pre-1970s. Some people say it's 100 years old. I don't know if it's that, but we don't have absolute proof. And the condition of that, there's a lot of structural members that are in pretty bad shape. They're sagging in the roof line and so forth. So we had taken a look at that a few years back and decided that really it needs complete replacement instead of just trying to refurbish one piece at a time, because by the time we start digging into it, it's everything. And the other pavilion was a pavilion put in by the Rotary back in the year 2000, and it is serving very, very well. It's very low maintenance. We don't have problems with bird nesting and other issues, so it's been very well enjoyed by the public, and it's very, very good service shape. So the decision was made with Planning Commission to basically do a twin of that, and that's based on a county park design that's been around for many years, and it's doing real well. So basically, we put that package together, took floodplain permitting, because it's a 100-year floodplain over there, put it out for public bid, only received one bid. However, we did get a bid from Laux Construction, and Laux is very interested in the project because they did a lot of the other more recent improvements about 10 years ago in McCormick -- a little over 10 years ago, actually, in McCormick Park. The concessions building, the whole trail system, the lights that you see, the big parking lot at the corner, that was all part of the big product that Laux did. They also worked on the police department over here. They've worked over at -- they did the salt barn on our facility, and then the auxiliary building that we've got. So they're familiar with working in town. The one bid was $119,000. We did talk with them afterwards to say, is there some value engineering things we could do? And what we found out is the most we could really knock it down is maybe 10 grand, but you're going to significantly cheapen the product in the end, and it wouldn't have the same aesthetic and also the same potential long-term serviceability. There is a nice thing that within the community, there was a -- there's a company that's come forward that's a Williamson person that has wanted to donate a metal roof, which is really great because it's going to have the look of cedar shingles, but yet durability well beyond what we would get for the asphalt shingles. So I guess with that, if you got any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Yeah, just, I mean, to the extent that you know, is this in the range of what this should cost? Because I know we had issues with Putnam, so is this in the range, just so we know? I mean, I don't know how much a bid costs to build a pavilion.
Yeah. Well, building costs are significantly higher than what they were, you know, four or five years ago. So on a square foot basis, it's kind of in the ballpark for what you're seeing.
Steve, did you have something?
Question on just the utilization. I mean, we have two. One is not in the best of shape. Is there a need for a second one?
Go ahead, John.
I can tell you that I was at the park right before the meeting, and there was somebody meeting in the older dilapidated pavilion, and there was another group in the other pavilion. So I think this has been in our parks' master plan for a number of years, and if you're there anytime that, you know, short of the death of February, even, there's folks over there. I think there's certainly a lot of utilization. And one of the things that we have talked about with the Parks Committee is possibly -- possibly, we want to gauge the community's interest first. I'll talk about that a little bit later under my report, about allowing rentals. Because if you've ever been there on a Saturday morning and seen the people lined up with, you know, it's somebody's three-year-old birthday party, or a family reunion, or a grandparents' birthday, there's folks that definitely use the pavilion.
Okay, thank you. Great answer. Tom, I'll go to you.
I guess I have a two-part question. First, for Scott, does this bid include replacement of the concrete as well?
I was just going to ask that.
The center part of the concrete is in good shape, and we're going to basically saw cut between just a little -- about a foot or so, maybe a foot and a half in from where the existing posts are right now, and then we'll have new concrete on the wings outside of that.
And then I guess my next question was for John. You said it's kind of been in the works for a few years, we've kind of budgeted towards it. What did we budget towards a project like this?
So there's been a placeholder in the budget, about 60 grand for, I think, going back five years. And it's general fund money, so it's not like it's not sequestered or stays there, it just kind of rolls through every year. So and if I was -- it's more than we anticipated, but this is -- we're building a structure that hopefully will be there for another 50 years. And so while it is, you know, at first glance, it's more than what we anticipated, I think it's worth doing a project. And frankly, it's incumbent on me and myself and the treasurer to manage our general fund through the rest of the year and make sure that if we have to amend our budget, we'll do that. I don't anticipate that, though. This particular line item is more than what we would like to pay, but we can accommodate the rest of the budget.
Dan, go ahead.
So in my opinion, we definitely need two pavilions just because of the usage you see at the park. My only question is, I know, and this is a significantly larger pavilion, but in the last couple of years, Friends of Williamson Park fundraised for the one over at Volunteers, and I was wondering what the -- if we knew what the comparable cost was between the two, is it -- does it seem like even with the increase in cost for pavilion, is it in line with that?
Yeah, actually, we talked about that this morning. The -- that's a 25 -- do you have any mentions on the one at Volunteers? It's about a quarter the size, maybe?
About a third.
About a third of the size. And the total for that was about 35 grand. So and that's a metal structure. It's a little different aesthetic and kind of significantly, you know, different.
Scott, what's the value of the roof that's being donated?
I believe it's somewhere between 15,000 and 25,000 dollars.
Okay, all right. So that's a pretty significant donation to this project, so I appreciate that. Terry?
Can we get it done this summer?
This fall. It'll be done before the snow sets in.
Okay, excellent.
Summer's almost over.
Can we all do that?
All right, Steve, I'm going to go to you, and then I'll go to Scott.
How does the roof donation play in with the 107,000 dollars for the project?
That is complete donation. What we have is a sub material that goes on with our project, and it can, you know, it can take a month or two of weather without any harm to the structure, and then they'll come back in with the roofing.
Okay, all right, yes.
The roof donation was part of the bid package, too? The contract?
It was included in the bid package that the roof was donated.
They knew that on the front.
Yes.
Okay. So that's folded into the 119,000, that donation price?
Correct. Yeah, if that's what the question is.
Yes.
It's not that the 119 is paying somebody to put the roof in.
Right, correct.
It's -- but the bid was put in knowing that there was a donation of the roof.
I see. Excellent, okay.
So the value of the buildout is really going to be 140,000?
Correct. Yeah, correct.
Scott?
Yeah, I'm curious about the only getting one bid thing. Is that something that you could talk about, like why only one bid? Is this something new in this, when you're trying to get construction, or what's going on with that?
Or is it a sign of the times?
It's kind of a sign of the times right now. We put this out through the Lansing Builders Exchange, which goes throughout the entire southern Michigan area, and we had sent it out to some contractors, and Laux responded. So it was out there for everybody to see.
I'm assuming that you have a pretty significant bid window, too?
Yeah.
From the time you posted to the time you go out and look to see.
Three or four weeks, which is pretty customary.
I mean, I think this is no different than what we've seen ever since COVID happened. There's not enough people out in the workforce. There's too many projects happening, and you can only do so much with what you have. I mean, same with, you know, receiving one bid for the Putnam project by your efforts.
That's what I was saying, too, is like, what's the deal with that?
Right. Good question, Scott. I appreciate that. Any other questions regarding this? If not, I'm looking for that motion.
I'll make a motion to award the 2023 McCormick Park Pavilion Replacement Contract to Laux Construction of Mason, Michigan, in the amount of $119,000.
Thank you so much, Dan. Do I have support?
Second.
All right. Any other further discussion? If not, Holly, will you call the roll, please? Gilroy?
Yes.
Lanyon?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Van Ooster?
Yes.
Reins?
Yes.
All right, thank you so much. That concludes our action items for this evening. Moving along, we have our discussion items, and I will go ahead and turn the first item, road diet, over to our city manager, John Hanifin.
Thank you, Mayor Gilroy, members of council. So we've been discussing this pretty much since I came on board, but I know the discussion goes back to 2016. Just kind of recap where we're at. We had a work session in June of 2022, and we've had this on our agenda every meeting twice a month since then to talk about it. Where we stand now, we did have the plans and specifications reviewed by MDOT, and just to also recap that, we're talking about going from two lanes of traffic in each direction to a lane of traffic in each direction with a center turn lane?
Yes.
As well as allowing four bike lanes throughout the majority of the project. So I guess I'll turn things over to Scott and ask if he has any specific updates from MDOT. I don't think we've -- the TARP meeting hasn't taken place yet, or?
No, the TARP meeting has not taken place yet, so we don't have any determination on additional funding.
All right. So the one thing that I want to make very, very clear to our viewing public, as well as old council members, new council members, this discussion has been happening for well over 10 years, even before our chief of police, Bob Young, came on board. This is something that we've given a lot of time and thought to. It is a safety concern, number one downtown at our four-way stop, our intersections. If anybody has lived long enough here in the city of Williamson, you know that South Putnam and North Putnam are technically two-lane streets, but everybody kind of scooches over to the right to make those right-hand turns. And what we're really trying to do is we're trying to provide a better safety path down Grand River on our Putnam streets. The other thing to mention, too, is that Grand River is M43, which is not governed by the city of Williamson. It is ultimately governed by MDOT, which is Michigan Department of Transportation, state of Michigan. Even if we did not want to have a road diet put in, if we were not a consensus vote, MDOT could come in and do that for us. So this isn't something that we decided to just vote on, you know, recently in a council meeting. It's something that's been talked about for many, many years. I know that change is difficult and change is hard, but I do believe that once this is in place, you'll see that traffic flows better, it will be a safer section of Grand River. We will have continuity with our left-hand turns at our downtown areas, as well as left-hand turns going north or south on Grand River to businesses and residential homes. So, you know, I hope that that can clear some things up, but I'm sure that there's still going to be questions as we can keep this project moving forward, and I would entertain any of my council members if they'd like to share their thoughts and comments on that. Dan, go ahead.
So when I first started hearing about this, early in my council career, was when our police chief was bringing this up, because he, as the chief of police, was not willing to cross as a pedestrian at Grand River and Putnam, because it was too unsafe for pedestrians to cross there. So when your police chief is telling you, I'm not willing to cross there because of too many close calls, we had to start looking at something. And when we went into this, our goal was to try and get a left turn signal at the stoplight there. And through five years of talks with MDOT at this point, this is what MDOT is telling us they will allow us to do, to try and fix that. And once we go through this process, if MDOT sees that there's still a need there and there's still issues there, that's when they'll allow us the left turn signal. They won't give us the left turn signal without doing this. And we feel like that, with the additional turn lanes, is what will eventually solve this problem, but they won't allow us to get to that left turn signal without doing any of this.
All right.
That's kind of where it's at. And when, going back, circling back to the top, when our chief of police is saying, I will not walk through there, it's a problem.
Yes, Terry?
I've heard that as a rumor before, and I've told other people of that rumor, that, oh, the chief of police, the guy, he says, don't take the corner there. And so I guess it's good to have it confirmed that this is for real. So, yeah, more safety was a good thing there.
Any other council comments? I know I had a comment in our gallery. Did you want to come forward and speak?
Ah, yes, please.
Okay. Can you come up to the podium, state your name and your city address, please?
Sure. Oh, actually, I'm sorry. Can I get in the water? I get parched when I try to speak in public, though.
This isn't public.
Yeah.
I've lived on Grand River for about 20 years.
Can you state your name and your address?
I'm sorry, Mike Willock, 520th Grand River, just down past City Hill. I've been there for close 20 years. I've never seen an issue with safety or congestion on Grand River that would warrant something like this. So I just had a few questions. I just wanted to kind of approach. First, my first question is, I guess, actually, another question. You said you wouldn't want to ever cross?
I guess I would be that chief of talk.
Yes, I think so.
Yeah. You said you wouldn't ever want to cross at the intersection. Have we had accidents, pedestrian accidents at the intersection? How many over the past 20 years?
Right. We have. So I think that is our most dangerous intersection we have in the city, and the second most is out of the road, and that's amplified because the speeds are higher out there. And as an adult going across there, it's very hazardous. I really worry about our children that are walking to school going through there. So this discussion came up regarding that. And then it also came up when we were talking about putting crosswalks in with the apartment complex down there, because it is very difficult for pedestrians to cross Grand River. And so I get where people are coming from with their anxiety about this, because when they first brought this up, bring it down from four lanes to three lanes, that doesn't make sense until I listen to MDOT, but I don't totally trust that. And so I went to the municipalities that have adopted this, and they swore by this. And so I believe firmly that this is the direction to go, because what goes in conjunction with that is those two lanes that people make out of one lane, that's very dangerous. I even contemplated trying to do traffic control, just to prohibit right-hand turns, because you can't see. That's not a square intersection there. And so, I mean, I understand where people are coming from when they oppose this. I initially was skeptical, but I'm a firm believer in it now.
Okay. Well, I agree to disagree with you.
Yep, yes, sir.
Again, my first question is, and I'm not sure who I should be addressing exactly, so.
Sure.
Was there an engineering analysis done to determine if this reduction in travel lanes is needed for our town specifically?
Sure.
Like, if, you know, so what criteria was used to decide why it is that this is necessary? Like, what made it necessary?
Scott, can you speak to that with MDOT traffic data and analysis?
In, oh, gosh, I think 2016, we did traffic counts down through this whole corridor, north and south, and a lot of the other side streets as well. So we had a very good understanding of what the traffic movements were and the types of vehicles, how often turns are. We had a turn count done at the intersection as well. All that's put into a computerized model called Syncro, which is the accepted standard for analyzing these by the transportation agencies. MDOT reviewed all of that, and, you know, road diets don't work for too high of a volume, and they don't really produce the desired effect for too low of a volume. There's kind of a sweet spot for this. And our traffic volumes down through here, I don't remember the exact specifics, I wasn't prepared for this today, but we're in the neighborhood of 10,000 plus in some of the legs of the intersection here.
Per day?
And per day, as far as vehicles and so forth. And that's right in the -- actually, we were told by MDOT this is in the sweet spot for where road diets work the best. There's been national studies done, including multiple states, but the state of Michigan's been included. Communities within Michigan were included in these national studies to look at the effects of not doing a road diet versus the road diet. And it changes the types of accidents that happen, and it reduces the severity of accidents, because you're getting that left turn person is getting into a dedicated turn lane. The right turns happen fairly fast, and nothing happens when you've got two lanes going in one direction. People are trying to shift and weave in between somebody stopping to turn left or right type of thing. So and it also is beneficial for the folks that are trying to come into the traffic, trying to turn into the traffic or a pedestrian trying to cross the road, because when you've got, you know, two lanes going this way and two lanes going this way, you've constantly got cars that are jockeying for position going down the road. So those are the types of things that they look at with the studies. Does that help answer your question?
Oh, yeah, it's, um, did you look into like the, how it's going to create shock waves? Basically, traffic shock waves with the amount of right turns. You talk about the left turns a lot, but the right turns are, every time you make a right turn, if you're making a quick right turn, traffic stops. Well, picture like stopping at a traffic light with a lot of people backed up. The first few people move right away as soon as the traffic light turns green, but the people in the back, 10, 20 cars back, it takes a long time to get started again. Now, if we're driving down the road, somebody stops to make a right turn, there's a line of 25 cars behind you. It takes a long time to get stop, go, stop, go. Now you go down the road another 500 feet, somebody else turns right. That shock wave continues to grow behind there. And there's, I mean, I've got the, you know, when I went to school, when I went to school for it, I mean, I've got the, right on my textbook right here talks about the shock waves and how to figure those out, and that's kind of what, I'm more concerned with the right turns, the amount of right turns that are going to happen that are going to stop traffic. The left turn sounds like, yeah, you're getting a left turn, that's great, but the right turns are going to cause the traffic to slow down every time somebody turns right. And as they slow down, there's two and a half miles from Zimmer Road to where it merges. So every time that somebody turns right, that shock wave is going to keep getting bigger and slower. So that traffic's going, so I'm just wondering, have you guys looked at that part of it at all?
And the road diets do have a little bit of a calming effect. It does help slow the traffic down as it comes through the center of town. They did look at the turning movements with the modeling that was done to see how many movements were going, right-hand turns and that type of thing.
Okay, it seems like the, mostly we look in the road diets, the studies that have been done and where they've been implemented. It looks like most of them have been done in large, larger cities, on boulevards or stuff like that, where there's not as much ingress, egress off of those roads. It's more businesses, apartment complexes, places with large parking areas. Here, yeah.
I'd like to give anybody else an opportunity to speak to. And what I'd like to do is connect you with possibly Scott after city council. It sounds like you've got a few more questions, and I do want to be cognizant of our time and others here. Would that be okay? Would you be okay with taking this offline with Scott, our city manager?
I could do that. Can I ask two questions, then, more directly related to, I guess, general questions?
Sure, yeah, I'll allow that as long as they're not super...
Sure, okay. Yep, you said you've been talking about this since 2016.
Yes.
I've lived here that entire time, I've never heard of it.
Okay.
I've spoken to everybody I've spoken to about this since I found out. Not a single person's heard about this.
Well, what I can tell you, and I mention this every single time, our meetings are open to the public. We have our calendar on our website. We post all of our agendas and our meeting minutes. So for people to go uninformed, when we have the resources available, and also we have an open office five days a week from eight to five, and our staff is ready and waiting to answer questions. I'm a little shocked that people are approaching us at this point in this project. I've been on city councils since 2016. This has been talked about every single year, and our meetings are open to the public.
Has there ever been outreach for it, though?
We did, we actually had an open house that we publicized on our city website, on our social media. We've done everything we can, and I think that our staff has done a fantastic job in making sure that our public is very well aware of what is happening.
The public open house was June twenty-second, two months ago. It was advertised on the, on the new board over there, on all the city Facebook pages. We did the best we possibly could, and they had all the models and everything that Scott just talked about, all here for two hours for anybody that wanted to come and see any of it.
And residents did show up, they weren't sitting in a room alone. Residents attended, so people heard and found out.
What was your, what was your extra question?
Well, I will say that living on Grand River and reducing that traffic, just naturally, it's going to go, when you reduce it from four lanes to two, you're going to have traffics, intervals between traffics is going to be half as much. I live on the south side of Grand River, my kids go on to school at St. Mary's. We go in McCormick Park all the time. I've never had an issue with them crossing Grand River before. I feel like this is actually going to make it less safe for them to cross because now the traffic interval is much closer together. So can you say to me right now that this is actually going to be safer for my kids and for me backing into my, out of my driveway? Is it going to be safer for me after this is done? When you've got traffic that's much more congested going past my house now?
Yes.
So you're on record saying this is going to be safer for my children?
Yes.
Thank you so much, Mike, for being here.
Just a minute, Mike, you should be commended for coming and speaking. I've only been on the council for a year. And one of my frustrations that I've expressed in the past is that we don't have individuals in the audience. And I've watched the council, I've walked the city manager and their staff, try to do, as the mayor just said, as much as we can physically possibly do to tell people what's going on in the city. And so it's been frustrating for me not to have individuals aware of what's going on. And so I commend you for showing up and wanting to hear what's going on, and raising your voice and expressing your voice so that we can all take that into consideration.
I think something maybe in the future you should consider is just sending to old school, sending letters to everybody. So not everybody's on social media, not everybody's looking at that stuff. If you just send letters, it's a small town. All you gotta do is send letters, everybody would know about it. Because I'm a hundred percent, everybody I've talked to has definitely heard of this, so...
Thank you so much, Mike.
So thank you.
Yes, Jordan.
Thank you.
And again, I do want to be...
I got, I'm not going to be long-winded.
But I thank you for being here.
Jordan Davis, six five five McCauley Street. I'm just asking, and I want to kind of piggyback off what Mike said as far as update goes. If my, some of my question was answered through the city pages and things like that. But I'm really frequent on the Williamson update. So I'm wondering if it wouldn't be too much of the council to ask where if this did happen, to post things where the people are. There's five thousand plus people, citizens of Williamson on that page. And I had never heard of this before, and I would love to be informed of what's going on. My main thing is the exorbitant amount of construction that we've had lately, right? And so if I could be informed, have a little bit of time to digest it, be involved in the conversation, I'd be a much happier resident than just like, whoa, we're going to have another M forty-three shut down now. And it also seems like, you know, although safety is of an issue, and I appreciate the chief's concern, I grew up in this town, right? And we used to run across the road, no problem, right? And so I do think that there's some safety concerns of some residents being put in front of the flow of traffic and other, just general ambience and historical value of the community zone.
Thank you, Jordan, I appreciate it. So one thing I'm going to state is that the city of Williamson does have their own Facebook page, and we also do post to the Williamson Community Update. We have staff that actually watches the Williamson Community Update and will answer questions that are on there. As council members, we share our City of Williamson page. I know I share as much as I can on my own page on that. But when, but when we have our own primary page, going those extra steps, that takes staff time to monitor those, monitor those other pages. And while social media is great, I want them to focus on our page. If people are interested in what's happening, they can come and see the Williamson, City of Williamson Facebook page. If we have time to get it out on the other pages, we'll do the best we can, you know? As far as, I grew up here too, and I can, I probably can trump you a number of years from now, but that's okay. And you're absolutely right. Back when we were younger, it was a little bit different. Now we have these things, which thank goodness, state of Michigan, you know, passed a law that you're not supposed to. But there's a lot of distracted driving and pedestrians and drivers on the road. We have to be defensive all the time. And so, and there's a lot more traffic. I mean, the amount of traffic that comes through this city during a normal workday, I kind of wonder myself, why aren't all these people at work, you know? So we all just have to remember that everything that we do here, it's because we want our city and our community to be safer. We're not seven people up here deciding, seven people want to change the traffic pattern on Grand River. This has been something that has been taking place for the past at least ten years. So I think that we are doing the right thing for our community in trying to make it safer. And we will certainly listen to everybody's concerns and comments as we go through this together. It's not just us up here going through it, it's everybody. And because we live here, we're going to experience it too. So I appreciate you coming and, you know, and speaking and sharing your thoughts with us.
Thank you.
Anyone else on this? If you could state your name and your address, please.
Sure, I'll state my name, but I live off by Nutter. My name is Caitlin Krebs. I want to appreciate Tommy Pratt, we've had a conversation a couple times, appreciate you being on there. First and foremost, thank you for your time and seeing me and hearing me out today. Secondly, I'd like to address the social media concern and the communication plan that you have. My credentials are that I'm a public relations manager. I'm also a project manager for a big firm for marketing. I'd like to first say that your communication plan is severely lacking and ineffective. Not only have I not here heard about this, but also other people have heard about this. And your reasoning for not posting on the other community channels is blatantly just ignorant, unfortunately. So I've done social media for many years, and it takes very, very little time to post and things like that. So as a, as a, as a help and volunteer of the community, I'd like to volunteer my services and time to help with your social media pages and making sure that the community is well-informed. I can create a communication plan for you if you wish. But I do think that your communication plan is ineffective. As someone who's been in this industry for a very long time, I do have a degree in public relations as well. So those are my credentials, and I really love to offer my services for free as a volunteer, as a community service, so that people like myself and Mr. Jordan Davis are also informed because I just think that there's a bit of a problem here. So I'm going to leave that on the table. My name again is Caitlin Krebs, you can find me on Facebook. And to address the previous statements of being on social media, I'm not on social media. I actually just logged on for the first time in over a year. So to be that it's unheard of for a thing like that is correct. And I also did a quick search in the community Williamson update about diet. The only post that came up in the last five years was the recent post that myself and Jordan just got word of, which was last night. So again, ineffective at best. And I would like to also address that printing services, like people that donate roofs and things, they also can donate printing services. I know that A One Printing in Oakhamus there in Lansing, they also offer services and discounts to cities. So having a letter go out, whether it's an email news blast, which is also something you can do for free on HubSpot with a free account, you can also do that just by printing and sending out mail. I really think that's a great idea. And I also think having the first of the year, sending out your agendas and your yearly calendars is going to be also important. Not everyone of your community is digitally inclined. There are half of your community is actually over the age of fifty-five. And they're, you know, like my parents, her little technology inept, so...
Oh, that hurts.
I'm sorry, but the statistics do not lie. So I appreciate your diligence in the matter. I also don't agree with what's going on. I think that there are some probably better answers, but I'm not an engineer. All I am is a public relations specialist that's offering my services because I do think it's needed. But thank you for your time, and I hope you have a good night.
Caitlin, do you have a business card with you?
I do not. But I can give you my contact information if you wish.
Yep, yep, but why don't, why don't you do that, and then, you know, we'll, we'll have a chat.
Yeah, perfect, thank you so much.
Thank you.
So what's coming to my mind is the old days with the enterprise.
Oh, I know, I wish it still had it.
So when the enterprise was here, Will Weller, who was communicating what was going on at State House, that was, you know, it was, everybody got the enterprise, everybody could read it. And now, and it's not that way anymore?
No, it's not. I mean, even the state journal is a maximum of maybe a dozen pages. Print, print news is, you know, not there anymore. I wish it was, everybody is going digital. I mean, my dad is some age, he does not know anything about, you know, social media, technology, nothing. He has a difficult time with this. And so I do appreciate that. Yes, there's always opportunity for improvement, absolutely. I totally believe in that, I have a background in quality. And so continuous improvement is, is super important. I will say that we do send out a general calendar when we do our taxes, and it does list the dates. But, you know, we can always do better. And we'll definitely strive to do that. That's all I'm going to say on that. Caitlin, I'll get your contact information. And Terry, did you have one last thing? Because I do want to move on to construction project update.
How many hours do you think it would take a week to be, to make our system effective? It's not effective right now, which you pointed out. How many hours a week would it take? Is it five hours a week or fifteen hours a week here?
It depends on your communication plan currently. I have to evaluate that. And if there's not one, I have created, which can take two, five hours to create and talk to you guys. And then realistically, if I do my job correctly, no more than thirty minutes a week.
Thirty minutes a week?
Correct.
That's another word.
We'll get her contact information. All right, moving on, our discussion items is a construction project update. So I'll go ahead and turn this over to John, and he can, he can give us an update on this.
So we are not going to give you more comments on the diet?
If you have comments or if you have...
Yes, if you do, please, please stand up, state your name and your address.
I'm Alon, Alon Krebs.
I'm sorry, Alon?
Alon, A-L-O-N, that's all she wrote. I live with my daughter. We're members of the community, long time. Used to serve here on the community with the police department, Jim Leclair, Uncle Howie, and all. I'm not so sure I agree with MDOT at all. And I have a, nah, not like Katie, I don't have any kind of personal training in speaking to people. But I'm an accident reconstructionist, graduated College of Engineering, Michigan State University. Dr. Bride was also on that department, Dr. Fisher is well there on my department. And I worked hard to understand accidents and crimes and things like that. The reason people are turning, making the North Putman and South Putman Road turns to two lanes there is because it's inefficient to have one driveline. That ought to tell you that if you're going to take away two lanes in either direction on Grand River, it's going to get more inefficient. That speaks for itself. People have decided that they can scoot over, and there's plenty of room for two cars there if nobody does a farmer's turn or whatever. So if people are turning now one lane into two lanes because of problems with traffic here, you're really going to add that? I, I don't see that as making a smart move. As far as safety goes, if you want to make it a safer town, there are many volunteers around, and I know that we used to hire part-time officers because they're kind of greedy, they want to get out there and write everything, stuff everything that moves. And that's not a good thing, especially for a nice community like Williamson. But the fact of it is, if you really want to make it a safer town, force the speed limits. Does anybody know what the state of Michigan says the speed limit is in town, even if it's unmarked in the two, two-block area downtown? By law, you don't have to have it even, the twenty-five marker down here by the bank, the old bank, the third, you can't see it. It's occluded by trees. There's a lot you can do. It's hard to go back once you go to a diet like that. And I did, I did ride over to Mason and Hope, talk to them about their situation. They don't like it. Maybe the council liked it, maybe an engineer liked it. But engineers are normally wrong. Now, chief and I talked, and chief liked the idea. I policed a bad accident right there at the corner because the sunlight let it off the windows. The driver couldn't see the pedestrian hit. But like the other people were saying, how many times have we had any real big accidents in town? What happens when you go to a Michigan State University day and everybody gets off here to go to MSU game? One lane, really? Guys, I think you're going to cause a problem, and it's going to be hard to go back. If you make, sure, let's do it, let's try it, but let's make sure we can go back the other way if we want to. Does that ever happen? Yes, sir.
Do you think a left turn lane, a left turn light at Grand River and Putney would be beneficial?
Yes. But there are ways to do that, there are ways to do that without...
No, no, there's not, because MDOT controls that light. And they have told us that they will not give us a left turn arrow at that light.
Without a diet.
If you don't do this first. That is where this started.
Well, and let's, let's be honest about something, is that if down the road, we realize this was this huge ginormous fail, and we want to throw it all out the window, we can wipe the paint off and do it back the other way.
Yeah, all of this is paint, there's no medians going in, there's no traffic...
I think that's a lovely idea. How many times, you know, you talk about community reach out and involvement, how many guys have talked to Greg Wilcox or Amanda at the pharmacy or any other business person in town? They're happy that we don't have a chief of police in the police department that stops everything that moves because they need people coming to town to go through their businesses.
I don't think that's going to change, I really don't.
Well, I know you don't think...
And what I can tell you too is, you know, there are council, there are council, there's mayors and council members that perceive this, that have been talking about this for years.
It's gone on a long time, and I'm not here to tell you you're wrong. I'm just saying that there might be some other ways to look at it. You can add a lot of safety and security. You know, you're, you're paying sixty-five thousand dollars over what was budgeted, although it would be six years ago for that pavilion. Police department doesn't get hardly a dime anymore. We're having, we're having a hard time. Now, listen to me, I've talked to Austin.
So I'm going to call point of order, because I'm not going to, I'm not going to entertain an arguing match between my council member and our resident right now. But what I'm going to tell you is, we take very good care of our police department. Chief can back my comment up on that, we, we do. So I'm going to thank you for your comments right now, and I appreciate you being here, and I appreciate everybody being here.
Is there any opportunity going forward? Because I think you've pretty well done with this decision. But is there any opportunity going forward to look at assist somebody? Is there looking at the data, looking at the modality of what they're trying to accomplish here? As an outsider who does have a pretty good background in accident reconstruction and roadway...
So what I will say is, I think that we have, I think we've checked every single box. As far as MDOT giving, taking that data, doing their analysis...
Thank you, Mary, that's, that's all that's needed, thank you very much. You guys have a great night, I appreciate it.
And thank you for coming, I appreciate it.
You bet.
So John, I'll move back on to you for the construction project updates.
Scott, want to regale us with where we're at with North Putman?
Well, they started over a week ago, and they're working northward with the deep sanitary sewer right now. They're going to get to the intersection, or just shy of the intersection, of the North Putman Street condos. And then they're going to shift back down and start working on some storming intersection, all with the intent of trying to get out of the East Riverside intersection as soon as possible. So that's all going to be happening later this week. And then into next week, they'll be going back and working on the manhole that's at the North Putman Street condos.
I know that we had some significant rain last week. Did that have an impact at all with the project moving forward? Were there any delays?
They waited one day, they didn't work on Friday. I mean, town was out of power anyways, but there was a very significant amount of water that ended up in the erosion trench area. We had to deal with one homeowner, contractor took care of that. And I don't, yeah, one day.
Yeah, well, and I walked down there, saw you guys. That was great to go see the project live and in action. If none of the council members have got another brain, and I know that you're living in it. So you don't have to, you know... But I was impressed by how efficient it is right now. It stays on track. I see it, you know, completing within the schedule that Iron Horse gave us, and I'm very optimistic. And so I'm going to keep my fingers crossed for, you know, very minimal inclement weather so that we can keep it moving forward. Anybody have any questions?
Things are progressing according to plans.
Great, excellent. Anybody have any questions for Scott regarding the Putman project? All right, well, that concludes our discussion items. Moving along, correspondence received, we have the Ingham County Drain Commission notice. If you have questions regarding that, you can always check in with city manager John Hannafin. For our department head reports, I'll come back over to you, John.
Just a couple of brief things. Our parks master plan survey is, will be live in a couple of days. Wanted to get through the, you know, sort of the disastrous events that happened before we started, you know, posting things on social media and reaching out to folks so that people normalize a little bit. That'll be on our website, it'll be on Facebook. Maybe some of the closed invite-only Facebook pages will pick it up and post it. That would be one way to also get it out there. We have the farmer's market in, not this Sunday, but the Sunday after that. With the, it's actually a QR code to link right to the survey. We'll be dropping off hard copies of the survey to the senior center. It's something that was done last time, I think that worked pretty well. And so then we'll tabulate those by, by hand rather than digitally. I don't expect getting hundreds of those at the senior center. But we'll also work with the schools to see if they might want to share that on their, either their page or through their newsletter system, so...
That's awesome, great, thank you so much. Any questions for city manager? All right, chief, you're up.
I have two things to add.
All right, I'm ready.
So last week was first week of school.
Yes.
We got this construction project going on. It went, I want to report it, it went way better than expected. And I think that's a direct result of the communication from the city and from the school board. And so first week of school was ice chaotic. I must report this one was less chaotic, and we didn't have a constructor. So it works, and so I want to encourage the citizens to keep using those alternate routes. I've talked to many that discovered, like the vision vehicles, they didn't know was there. So I want to do this. I've talked to many that discovered like the bridge and vehicles, they didn't know was there, said I wanna do this forever. And it is, it's like 800 feet to the school. And, and so I know there was a lot of consternation about that, we were, the schools were, and so that went well. Second thing we had last week was tornado. And so I know the city had all that 96 traffic coming through for like some, just less than 24 hours, some for more than 24 hours. And I know we were without electricity and I know we had a few branches down, but we are way better off than our friends and partners in the township that really got hit. And, and so, but everything works, we all came together and, and it works, so that's my report.
All right, well thanks Chief, appreciate it. Yes, Terry.
Yeah, the, the thing of going over the bridge to get to school, I think is a really cool idea, what, how many students do you think do that now? So, we talking 50 or 200?
No, there's probably about a dozen families.
A dozen families.
Yeah, so you're, so it's not just 12, it's families. And, and so they're finding that it's like way shorter than a lot. And see, get around despite the construction zone, even after the construction zone, they may continue on to do that. Now, we've had some pretty good weather and, and so I was out there quite a bit talking to people at school, had a lot of people out there. We, we've invested a lot of resources and, and, and so that has helped.
Great question, thank you. All right, we do have our report from Livingston County Building and Safety Engineering, that is where residents can pull permits for any type of construction that is happening in the community. If you have questions regarding anything on those reports, please see our City Manager, John Hanifin, and he will be able to give those answers for you. Moving on, we've got our committee, subcommittee reports, does anybody have anything they would like to share? I've got Dan with his hand up.
I filled in for Councilman Pratt at NESA for a special board meeting last week. They've been working on a funding agreement between Weberville DVA and NESA for about three years. It had been passed at a prior NESA meeting, but they discovered that a change of the effective date would actually net NESA one extra payment in the term of the agreement. So we met last week to rescind the original agreement and then amend the effective date and then do that. So going forward, the Weberville DVA will be contributing about $20,000 a year to the purchase of certain fire apparatus to be used in the Weberville DVA district and that is through 2025.
All right, thank you for that update, I appreciate it, thank you for calling in, Councilman Pratt. Anyone else have any meetings they'd wanna share information? All right. Again, we have an opportunity for audience participation, maximum of five minutes per presentation. Do I have anybody that'd like to come forward at this time? Monica, you had your hand up first, please come forward.
Hello and thank you, as you all know, I'm your Ingham County Commissioner in the area and I just have to say how proud I am of all of your leadership skills because it has been crazy and there's been a lot of people that are hurting. There has been tremendous amount of devastation, as we're all aware, I missed the beginning of the meeting to hear a lot of the comments, but I have been working hard with Leroy out there because we have had fantastic leadership here in the city of Williamson, we've had fantastic leadership in the township and Meridian as well. And, and they have stepped up in Weberville and pulled together, it has been a beautiful thing. But there's so many families, like if you go into some of the mobile home parks where they're sharing generators, the skirts around, all their mobile home parks were ripped apart. There's been a lot of people stepping up with food trucks going in there and helping. We've had DTE Energy coming out to Choice Farm Market. I actually had to go and find them in Fowlerville and I said, you guys need to be here in our area, bring in the ice and the water. So we pulled that together, Aldi has been receptive in that area. And as you know probably today, that our governor has signed that there is going to be the state of emergency, which is a beautiful thing, but from my understanding, just, I just left, so I don't make these meetings as much because I have the human services meetings that go on, so I left that meeting and our controller at the county said to make sure that you keep your receipts, make sure that everything that is tied with it, from the date moving forward to whatever they set will be, will be able to be given those to the state. And then you won't have to work through the emergency department, the emergency home security and stuff. But I just wanna say thank you. This is what community is about. This is why we step up in leadership roles, because we know when push comes to shove, we jump in and our community's number one. So I'm very proud, very proud, thank you.
Monica, thanks for being here this evening.
Quick question. You just mentioned the process for receipts and different things like that, we're working through the emergency declaration. Will the county be putting anything out for that process? And whenever they do, could that be passed on to the city so that they could pass that on to affected residents or on our website or?
Yes. I spoke with emergency, the emergency management team, the Homeland Security team, Rob Dale, and I believe that everybody's been in contact with him, afforded on his information. And as soon as they understand the process, they will pull everybody together. They will discuss the project or process on Zoom and then everybody will understand what's going on with that. So they have been on top of everything from the semis to everything, and they have connected with me everywhere. Sheriff's Department has been phenomenal, everybody has come together to be strong and that's what it's about, community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Monica, great question, Dan, I appreciate that. Jordan, you had a comment?
Yeah, real briefly, so, Jordan Davis, 655 McCully. The tornado sirens, I saw some people voicing concerns on the Facebook page about not being able to hear them and they were very faint to me, even over on McCully Street, I know with the wind and the rain and everything, but I just didn't know if there was any ability to extend that reach so that more people because, could hear that? Just something, you know, to think about in the future, I'm not sure if that's just a, a me issue or whatever, but.
Thank you, thanks, Jordan. All right, I will start down here at the end with Tom, Councilman comments.
I guess my only comment is, I actually do really appreciate people showing up to the meetings and voicing concern, opinions, comments. I just hope we can continue that trend and have people show up regu- more regularly. You know, sometimes the comments and concerns and questions will help us more if they occur early on in the stages of some of these projects instead of at the tail end of them, so. I really enjoy having the conversation when, when people are here and we get to hear some others' opinions and different things, so. I hope we can continue that trend.
Thanks, Tom, appreciate it. Jerry?
I'm with you on the tornado siren thing, I'm about a quarter of a mile away, I can see as I drive back and forth, there's a tornado siren, it's not far away at all. At 9:40 in the evening, the rain and the wind are going like crazy and there's this fainty, faint kinda thing going a little bit up and down, thinking, is that a siren? But it was not like, get out of bed now because this thing is coming for you, so. Maybe there's a volume control.
Oh, Jerry. All right, Steve?
Echoing comments I've made the last couple of sessions and what Tom said, it is encouraging to see individuals from the community to show up. Disappointing knowing what the council and what city offices have done as far as trying to get that communication out, so appreciate whatever assistance or guidance you can provide. As always, my one year of experience, John, City Manager, has been open, receptive, happy to hear suggestions. None of us up here, exception of city staff, are paid. We're up here because we love the city of Williamson as you do. And so keep that in mind that when we make decisions up here, we're doing the best that we can recognizing it's for the good in our minds, for the good of the city, taking into consideration all of the information provided by the city, by the state, by staff. And I think that, keep that in mind that these loving unpaid staff members are in it for Williamson and not for themselves.
Very well said.
I'll start first with, they're not here, but the construction workers that have been working up Putman even though it is a royal pain. They are very considerate, they are awesome at their job. You know, they're considered enough to, I've seen them standing up there waiting for like, you know, 7:30, 8 o'clock to not like disrupt by starting construction too early, so I, we appreciate that and, you know, cutting out before, you know, everyone's trying to sit down for dinner, so I'm up here banging in the excavator. And my sons loved watching it, so, you know, that helps too. So Scott, if you can tell them they're doing a great job, we appreciate it. Second is, I do wanna address some of the concerns that were raised in the road diet. One, I mean, the fact of the matter is that people are turning right because they're waiting for people to turn left, or we haven't acknowledged that at all. That's the reason why we're doing it, not because people are angry, they're trying to get around the person. So if we have a left turn lane, we have the ability to cut that section out, there shouldn't be people racing around. And the safety concern, I mean, like I've been here in town for six years. I've almost been struck three times by someone racing to turn left. My children have almost been hit four times and the fifth time, someone slammed on their brakes and tapped the stroller that my daughter was in. So I am a little curious how I, maybe I had just bad luck driven, I don't know. But I mean, I've only been here six times, six years and I've been almost hit a handful of times, so it is an issue. And I do personally believe that this will help resolve that.
Great, thank you. Scott?
Yeah, I appreciate Monica's comments about people coming together, that's good to hear, I like that a lot. My wife as well won't cross at the four corners, she's almost been hit there and also other people have said similar things, it's very clearly an issue. It's not a gray area, it's a very difficult situation.
Dan?
I just want to start off with expressing thanks to NESA and the police department and Ingham County Emergency Management. Mayor Gilroy, who I know, Mayor Gilroy, who I know, went out and helped with the traffic Thursday night. But just all, all the people that, that stepped up and were out there for, for a lot of hours trying to, trying to help people trapped on the highway and in their homes and the gentleman who, who cleared Haven of Rest driveway so they could get, get the ambulance in and just all the, all the people that it, that it took coming together to, to work through what's been going on for the last few days, that's a, it's been, it's been amazing and humbling, I just thank all those people. Secondly, I am gonna address the, the comment about funding a pavilion instead of the police department and that in no way is a, is a situation whatsoever in the city. We've done a lot of things in the last year to year and a half to, to increase funding to our officers and our police department, and worked very hard on that. And if, I, I know every member of this council, if they thought one dime of that money going to the pavilion was being redirected from, from the police department, it would never happen. So, so that, I, I should not have, I should not have spoken out of turn with that resident, but that's something I'm very passionate about and I wanna do that, so.
Thank you. Dan still have my thank you list, but I'm gonna go over that thank you list anyways because the first thing I wanna say is, even though we are a small city of, of two square miles, 4895, 4895, it is a ripple effect out into our townships. They are Williamson just like we are. They may have different governing bodies and different people that serve in the same capacity that we serve at, but when it comes to situations like what happened Thursday evening, that's when we all become a very united community. And the city, you know, the city limit lines disappear at that point. Thursday evening, John came in, I didn't even recognize him because he was not in his cathy's and his long sleeve shirt and I had to ask him if I could help him, he's like. It was dark, it was very dark. We had reserve officers come in from Oakhamas that did not have to and help man traffic, you know, on Grand River because at that point, all traffic, traffic was coming off of Fowlerville and Weberville onto Grand River and having to head towards Oakhamas, I was out there till 1:00 AM in the morning because I do have that skill set thanks to my chief sitting right there. But I wanna say, you know, thank you to our city staff first and foremost for making sure that Friday morning and even over the night on Thursday, that our lift stations had the generators that we needed to have in place so that we did not occur flooding. You know, our DPW staff, Scott, how many people did we have on call over this weekend that gave, you know, had to come in and be away from family?
There were six people that came in at different points in time.
Right. So you know, this does not go unnoticed by anybody in this community. Ingham County Emergency Management, Rob Dale contacted me directly and told me what was in place. If residents out there don't know what Ingham 211 is, Ingham 211 is very similar to Google is how Rob Dale explained it, you call 211 and they will help find the resources that you need for the problem that you're having. So that is something that everybody should have either, you know, in their cellphone, on a board next to a landline if they still have it, 211 is super important. I received a personal call from Congresswoman Slotkin wanting to know what could she do to help us in this situation? And while we did not have the direct effect of that tornado, we do have the direct effect of it because we were without power for 48 hours, which leads me to my next thank you. I cannot say enough to DTE, their third-party line workers. I sent a personal note out to Michael Sage who is our, our direct representative. From 9:46 Thursday evening until 9:36 yesterday, 48 hours, almost 100% restoration in this community. That to me is unheard of, they put this community on the, you know, on the front burner, got their line crew out here, did what they needed to do. I think we still have some sporadic outages in the community, in the townships, but they are working so hard to get everybody back online, so I can't say thank you enough to them. Monica Shaver, can't say thank you enough to you for being in constant communication with John, with myself as far as, you know, what we had available to us for resources, it's so important that we have that partnership and I know you're doing that for those other townships as well. Locally here, I have to give a big shout out to Kodak True Value. Immediately, they were letting people know that they would be at the store after hours open even though there was no power, getting residents anything that they needed because of this. They were able to get generators in for residents that did not have them. We had three different restaurants that said, we're gonna make meals for people, come and see us. We had Jose's Cuban sandwiches deliver food to our DPW, our police department and NESA. We had Sunnyside and Old Nation, get Blackstone Grills out and make food and we're not asking for a dime. They were feeding people because they knew people needed to be fed because they did not have electricity in their homes. Admiral Gas Station was open almost 24/7 for wrecked gas for generators and when they ran out of gas, they made sure they got tankers in and got back up and running again because they had a generator to be able to keep the gas station open. Speedway down here, while they did not have electricity, they were handing out bags of ice for people that needed to keep food cold in coolers because they didn't have generators. That is what community is. That is what community is. I'm proud to live in this community, I'm proud to be a part of the leadership team sitting at this table with this community and I think it makes us stronger and better as we move forward after events like this. I really would prefer not to have to go through something like this again. And we also have to remember, there are people in these homes south of Williamson that lost everything. There are centennial, 100-year-old, 200-year-old farmsteads that have lost their entire livelihood. So we need to remember that, that while we think we may have suffered, they are suffering so much more. So if you have the ability to, to help, I know that somebody did put out on the Williamson Community Page, anybody that needs help with cleanup, there are people that have time and are able to volunteer and, and help with that process. And, you know, as we continue to work through this and as we get that information for how we can seek out funding, if the governor has signed this declaration of emergency, we certainly will, but we will also be hand in hand with our township partners, making sure that they know that that's aware and what can we do to help them as well, so. I think that's it for me, I just wanna thank everybody that sits around this table, that, you know, you are always front-facing to our community, being able to answer questions. And when you can't answer a question, you direct them to our city staff who is able to answer those questions as well. So with that, I think I will go ahead and call it adjourned. Didn't see that down there. All right, I'm gonna ask for a motion for us to go into closed session, please. Thank you, direct support.
For the purpose of ASCFME collective bargaining allowed under MCL fifteen point two-six-eight C.
Thank you, Brandon. Do I have support?
Seven.
Roll call, Holly?
Lanyon?
Yes.
Manson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Ben Oscar?
Yes.
Rhines?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
All right. We are going to move into closed session. At this time, I would ask the public to please leave our council chair. And I will go ahead and call us back in the open session at eight eighteen. Looking for a motion to go out of session. There is no action needed.
Make a motion to adjourn?
So much. Do I have support?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Eight nineteen.